So we'll get inside. It would be this one. Hello there.
How are you? Good.
So all you can do is just click on it and there we go, and escape. Okay, very good, thank you very much, thanks.
I do the mic turn on the mics. I go around. And Mike has a presentation on thirty. Is that what he's going to show us?
Yes.
Did you guys already test it? Okay. I'm waiting for...
Ooh, gosh, who's sat in this chair?
Steve, are you available Friday to do a insurance meeting?
What time?
Nine o'clock.
I believe so.
It's here.
Here, do I say?
Do I say, okay.
I've got my calendar. Let me text my wife real quick something here, let's see. Morning Phil, hey, I'm so sorry to hear about your brother. Didn't know that until sometime afterwards.
You guys kind of got reunited in last...
Well, better that than not.
I would have...
That was good, you know his wife is totally dependent on him. I didn't realize, I didn't know that at all, they didn't marry. This July would be fifty years, but I had no idea how dependent she was.
Well, I don't even have any... I had a couple bottles in there.
That's my issue.
Well, can't during the day smell that stuff on you.
All kinds of stuff, because I have no idea what to do with it.
They can smell.
What time is that event?
Nine o'clock.
Here, Board of Supervisors?
It's in the testing room today.
Right over there. At the far end.
Sheriff's Office.
Yeah.
There's...
That's the...
But is he here?
Appreciate it, I'm going to be in our CRC meeting. Going to get it open.
Really? Boy, you have to be mine. I got a bunch of stuff online, I still got too many.
Come on, you have four more seconds.
Just turn around and look upstairs.
The spot says eight twenty-seven.
Good morning, and thank you for joining us here at today's Board of Supervisors meeting. I'll ask that we all please stand for the flag salute, followed by a moment of silence, and during the moment of silence, please keep in mind those in Boston.
Supervisor Cox, would you please lead us?
Gladly.
Ready, salute.
United States to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia's hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. All right, first item on the agenda today is public comments. This portion of the meeting is reserved for members of the public who may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, time will be limited for public comment. Is there anyone here wishing to speak during public comment this morning? Sure, please come forward.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is John Felver. I represent a company called Ameriprise Services that for the last five years, we have been doing service with the County of Tulare, providing uniforms, mats, mops, and towel service. We're having, we're at our wits' end. There's two departments within the County of Tulare that we have not been paid since 2011. And working with that department, we've been getting the runaround, we're at our wits' end, so here, I'm coming to the Board of Supervisors to try to get your help in working with the department to get us paid. There's over $2,700 of unpaid bills. Working with a gentleman by the name of Matt Field, back last year, a year ago, had told us some credits were owed. We work with the federal government, the state government, city governments, county governments, all over the state. This is the only department that has told us that we need to redo the invoice before they will submit payment. We did that a year ago, still did not receive payment. Typically, in most businesses, in most governments, if a credit is owed, you produce a credit memo, you attach the credit memo along with the invoice and it's paid. And the reason why this is, for auditing purposes. So therefore, you have a credit, a history of what actually happened with that invoice versus redoing these invoices. So we've done this, they've asked us to do it again. At this point, we've just said, we're done, please pay us, and we want to move forward, and there's been no response. So therefore, we're pleading to you before we take it to the next step.
All right, thank you very much, sir. I will have our county administrative officer, please get ahold of you, and he does control all the money, so he will be visiting with you. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak under public comment this morning? Okay, seeing no one, we are going to close the public comment period, and we are going to bring it back to the board for item number two on the agenda, which is Board of Supervisors Matters, and we are going to begin with our illustrious supervisor from District One, Supervisor Shida.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two weeks ago, I attended a conference, CalCog Conference, and CalCog is a group of transportation authorities throughout the state of California. And when I attended the first one, eight years ago, there were about twenty-five people there, and it went through a rough period of time, they kind of disbanded, and we started back up, and CalCog at this meeting had about a hundred and fifty people out. So it was quite an improvement compared to the old organization. Yesterday, we had a Clara County Water Commission meeting, and we had a presentation by the Tulare Basin Watershed Initiative, which was quite interesting. Finally, we're looking at a holistic approach to solving our water problems from the Sierras down to where floods out in Tulare Lake. So we've always been limited because every different agency or department only looked at their part of problem like flooding. Now, we're finally starting to look at the effects of flooding versus the environment, not only damage, but how to increase natural resources. So it's a great move on the part of a lot of the agencies, and that's all I have today.
All right, thank you very much, Supervisor. Next, we're going to go to Supervisor Cox.
I have a few things, many of you know, a few weeks ago, I had an older brother pass away, so I spent quite a bit of a, two weeks, helping his family making the arrangements. During that time, had the opportunity to interact with a couple of county departments, and the experience was very positive, from the coroner, who actually came out to the residents on the day of, very polite and helpful, and it's just all around, you know, made a bad experience good, to going to the works and having some need of some work there, working with Sarah Mercurio in that department, she was absolutely wonderful, and I hope all of our employees are as nice and kind and caring as she was. She was able to help the family work through some difficult things, and it was a very pleasant experience, even though we were dealing with some difficult issues. Last week, was able to attend the Veterans Drug Court on behalf of the board. There were five graduates, it was a very well-attended event, a very successful process there that we have, and that was covered by Judge Ferguson. Last week, on Wednesday, I was able to attend the Boys and Girls Club Board Meeting and present the urban art to them. You'll remember, we had the urban art contest in September of last year, that art traveled all over the county, making most of the libraries in the county. You know, that was presented to them, and they're going to use that for decorations and as fundraiser opportunity. The last thing I'd like to cover is, I guess I'm going to jump on a soapbox for a minute. Yesterday, at our TCAG meeting, we started the process where we were talking about amending the Measure R program, and there are some, there were some things said about Measure R being unfair, and it's always been my position that Measure R is very fair, that when that was being written seven years ago, it's okay, Michelle. You want me to wait while the curtains get open?
I just noted, noticed our chambers were packed this morning, so I wanted to make sure everyone had a seat, so they could relax and listen to your banter on your soapbox.
Well, I've not yet begun, begun to banter. Back seven years ago, when Measure R was put together, most of you know, I was able to play a big part in writing Measure R. And as we look at Table Five, which is the table we're talking about amending, which is the bike and ped and transit piece, I can remember the conversation with every city manager from every city, transportation specialists in those cities, and having a discussion with them about the monies that would be available through Measure R. Yesterday, I used the analogy of everybody was invited to dinner, everybody came to dinner, everybody sat at the table, they partook, and they went home full, having eaten everything they wanted, and in some cases, we even packed a doggy bag for those that didn't want to eat anything at the table or take anything from the table, and we made them take something home. Porterville being one of the areas, and the City of Tulare being an area that pretty much didn't want anything, we made them take something from the table. And here, six years down the road, after a very successful Measure R, they're calling it unfair. Well, there's nothing unfair about having forced people to take something that they didn't want, and at this point, they come back and say, well, you ripped us off, you didn't give us our fair share. There's no way, with the little bit amount of money that we're talking about, that could be potentially extra money, we're talking fifteen million dollars over another twenty-four years, there's no way to make everybody equal. And the fair thing would be to make sure that everybody participates in this extra money. And so that's been my position, that's a position I'll take, that's a position I will fight for, I don't think it's much different from anyone else here on the board. There's just going to be a lot of information coming out about this, and so that the public knows there was nothing unfair ever done, and that when Measure R was written, even though people did not want any of the benefits from Measure R, there were things written into the plan to benefit them, at some times against their will.
Anymore?
I'm done.
Okay, thank you.
For now.
For now, okay. Next, we're going to have Supervisor Worthley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just to be clear about what Mr. Phil, Mr. Cox is talking about, he's talking about that fourteen percent, that there's no issue about the regional projects or the actual road construction, reconstruction. A couple of things I wanted to point out, I know other, four of the five members were in Washington DC last week. I would like to just report briefly on the, I was there as the Chair of the Tulare County Association of Governments. Our single biggest issue was, were CMAC projects that we had involving a number of cities within Tulare County. There were five million dollars of projects to purchase C and G large-scale equipment, such as trash hauling, street sweepers, and we had no problem, except that we ran up against a federal law, which is called the Buy American Program, which requires certification that these be one hundred percent American-made. Well, if you know modern automobiles and trucks and trailers, that's virtually impossible. Someone told me that John Deere's motors or engines are made in Mexico, and you know, so you have those kinds of things where bits and pieces come from all over the world, so they could not certify they were one hundred percent made. There's a waiver process that we engaged in, going back last August, and we have not heard anything from the Federal Highway Administration. And so we met with the Deputy Director, Deputy Secretary in Washington, they were very apologetic. They said they were working diligently to try to get these waivers posted. The process requires them to be posted on the web, there's a fifteen-day comment period, and then hopefully the waivers will be given, and we'll be able to proceed, because the danger is, if we don't get these obligated, sometimes in June or July of this year, we will lose up to five million dollars of funds that have already been allocated to us. Long story short, as we were in-flight back to California, they posted the waivers. And so, coincidence, I think not, I think it was a result of the hard work, not only while we were back there, but in preparation for going back there, we had the support of our delegation, a letter had been written and signed by our congressional delegation supporting this, and just a very successful, hopefully successful conclusion of this process, and if any of you are so inclined, they're looking for comments positive as well as negative. I have a sort of cynical thinking, you're only going to get negative comments, but they really were looking for positive comments to support the waivers, so that we can get these funds, which are very necessary to improve our air quality in the San Joaquin Valley. Sorry it takes so long about that. Couple of small, minor, or other matters I wanted to mention was, last Saturday, Dyna Hill is a relay for life. Dyna is one of the most successful relay-for-life programs in the nation, in fact, on a per-capita basis, it is the number-one program in the nation. And this was our ninth year, they're looking at the tenth year next year, being able to hopefully achieve a million dollars raised over a ten-year period from a community of twenty-two thousand five hundred people. So it's, and of course, it's a much bigger thing than that, people come from all over the county to help support this project, but very successful. And just last, but not least, this morning at my Rotary Club, we had Manuel Jimenez from our Ag Extension Service present on the Bravo Gardens in Woodlake, and I just thought that's a good thing for me to remind the folks here about. Now is a great time to go out and see the gardens of Woodlake. If you've never been there, I encourage you to do so, they are amazing, and right now, the roses are in full bloom, it's beautiful, you won't find a more beautiful garden anywhere, and I mean that sincerely, and it's in our own backyard. So please, take a look at Bravo Gardens on the edge of Bravo Lake and Woodlake, I think you'll find your time is well-spent there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Nice, nice plug for your local beautification in Woodlake. We'll move on now to Supervisor Mike Ennis. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that.
Welcome.
Not last, you are. No, I just wanted to report on our trip to Washington, and also, I think we had a good trip. Got an excellent lobbyist group back there that works with us and gets us into the meetings we need to be. Success Dam was high on the agenda, and we spoke to everybody about keeping it moving in the right direction, taking all the restrictions off, and hopefully being able to expand the pool and be able to store one hundred and ten thousand acre-feet instead of eighty-two five. Also talked to the federal law enforcement, and also to the federal prosecutors on public lands. Supervisor Shida and I, well over half of our districts is, is public land, and to get support for eradicating the illegal marijuana grows up there, and then in tune, trying to tie some of those to the grow sites on the valley floor, so that we can get federal prosecution. And once we get federal prosecution, people start losing their land, their belongings, their cars, their bank accounts, that could be a big deterrent to these people that now are getting maybe six months and a slap on the hand. So I think we, we had a good, a good trip, we met with a lot of people, everybody seemed to be on board, and hopefully, we're going to get some response in the future. Also, trying to get more federal prosecuting, more judges, and more federal prosecutors on this, in the valley, so those were some of the things. And yes, I do have a mustache. Supervisor Vanderpool tried to grow one earlier in the year, as I was telling somebody earlier, he drank a glass of milk, the cat got in the house and licked it off. That's all I have, thank you.
That was a good one, Mike. You know, it's kind of interesting, when we were in Washington DC, you know, we would all introduce ourselves, and then Mike would have to introduce his mustache separately, since I was a new member of the gang, but anyways, that's neither here nor there. I just wanted to thank my fellow colleagues for talking about our trip to Washington DC. I thought it was a very successful trip, it wasn't something where we got to come back with a big bag of money, but what we did do was ask for some flexibility within federal programming to allow us to maximize the utilization of the efficiency of federal dollars that we are currently receiving. So I think we will make some strides in that direction, and we'll hopefully see some results by the end of the year. Also, this morning, we are joined by the Leadership Tulare Class from the City of Tulare. I wanted to take some time and really, first of all, just introduce the class, have them all stand and say their name, as well as the business that they are representing, just to show the board and show all the county departments that are represented this morning, local businesses in Tulare who are investing in the future leadership of our county and our community. So if you would, real quick, just go down and introduce yourself and say who you're representing and what businesses put you here, that would be great. Great, well, thank you very much, and the one thing that Lewis didn't mention, I'm glad he didn't, was that his son plays for USC football, and a son to be really proud of, but you know, it's still USC, so. Thank you, everyone, for being here, and I hope you have found your experience with Tulare County and learning about our government here very educational, and been a good time for you all. That concludes what I have to say under Board of Supervisors Matters. We will now entertain the consent calendar. Item number eighteen is going to be pulled off of the agenda. Is there any item that the members of the public would like to have pulled at this time? Anyone from the board like to pull any items?
I'm sure I move to approve the balance of the consent calendar.
Do?
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Worthley and a second from Supervisor Ennis, please vote. Motion passes unanimously, thank you very much. Now, we're going to be moving on to untimed items on our agenda. Item number thirty is a request from the Resource Management Agency to allow the Zone Change Initiation, PZI thirteen zero zero one, Early Mart Regional Medical Center to proceed as Zone Change, PZ application on approximately twenty-six thousand five hundred square-foot portion of APN located in Early Mart. You can, there's a lot more words there, Mike, but I figured you're going to go over them anyway, so I'll just leave that up to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Rousseau, counsel. I have a very brief presentation for you with regard to this agenda item, which is entitled "The Early Mart Medical Clinic Change of Zone." Let me just give you a brief overview of the proposal before you. This is a request for a change of zone from single-family residential AR... for a change of zone from single-family residential R1 to professional office PO on a 26,500 square-foot site within the community of Early Mart. The applicant for this proposal is the Tulare Local Healthcare District. The purpose of the project is to construct a school-based healthcare center, provide increased medical services to the community of Early Mart. The location is on a proposed park site that is being developed by the Early Mart School District. You may recall, in January, we were before your board with a presentation to approve an environmental document, a negative declaration for the grant that would lead to the construction, oops, the construction of this proposal. And moving to the next slide, the park site is to the east in the larger cross-hatched area. And this is where the park will go. To the left in this perimeter would be the location of the proposed medical clinic. And to the south of the proposed medical clinic is the school. This illustrates a conceptual design of what both the park and the medical clinic would look like if it were built out. All right. In order to present this matter to you, staff had to conduct what is known as a general plan consistency analysis. Very briefly, as a result of the new general plan that was adopted by your board recently, there were a number of policies that were considered and analyzed, and they were analyzed in Exhibit E, which is attached to your packet. That is the last exhibit in your packet. And the key policies that were addressed were smart growth and health communities. This proposal is consistent because by providing or promoting the medical clinic, it will promote healthy communities since increased medical services will be provided. In addition, it will be a public activity center in the sense that members of the public will go to this clinic in order to enjoy the medical services. In addition, when you look at the aerial as well as the conceptual design photograph, this is classic infill development in the sense that it's within the urban boundary area of the Early Mart Community Plan, and it's classic infill right smack in the middle of the community. In addition, there's a shared parking facilities policy in our new general plan, and this is an opportunity where folks can park who may use the clinic as well as the future, future park. And finally, there is a policy that promotes the county's cooperation with school districts in trying to develop joint use facilities. And here, the county is assisting with regard to helping build the park as well as promoting the necessary zoning in order to allow the medical use here. Moving on to the community plan, there is a cooperation policy in the community plan that encourages the county to work with school districts with regard to various projects. This would be a good illustration of that. Furthermore, there is a zoning consistency matrix in the community plan whereby the subject property is designated quasi-public, and when you look at the R1 designation, it is consistent with the PO or professional office designation, so we clearly have zoning consistency. With regard to ag preserves and Williams and Act contracts, there are no such restrictions on the subject property. There are no species of concern or wetlands. There is no affected waterway or flood zone that would create any health or safety threat to the subject property. And finally, with regard to wastewater capacity, the Early Mart Public Utilities District will issue a will-serv letter if a variance is obtained, and they are very encouraging that such a variance could be obtained.
Can I ask you a question here, Michael? I noticed that in the letter that was from the P, from the Public Utilities District, that they indicated as long as they were discharging during non-prime time or non-high-use times, but it wasn't defined. Is there any question or concern about that?
When taking the letter, or reviewing the letter as a whole, I don't really think that there will be a problem in that they're gonna work it out. And as a variance, which is discretionary action by the district board, I'm sure they'll work out conditions of approval to define when and to what extent they can discharge. But taken as a whole, I don't think this will be a problem for the project. If they didn't give wastewater capacity, there would be no project. So I think all signals are indicating right now go. All right, this next slide, next to the last slide, is up here to illustrate the timeline and the next steps associated with this project. This project came in the door March 1st, 2013. Today's date, April 16th, we are presenting to you the change of zone. If all goes well today and you authorize this zone change, we are headed to the Planning Commission on April 24th. The staff report, resolutions, proposed orders are already completed. With regard to the first reading, we have selected April 30th as an agenda date to come to your board, if everything goes well at the Planning Commission, to have the first reading. And then finally, the public hearing for the adoption of the change of zone is scheduled for May 21st, 2013. So, this is a pretty aggressive timeline, but all the paperwork is done, and we're committed to meet that timeline. I say this because we're also discussing with two other prospects, two other medical clinics, one in the East County and one in the North County. And in our discussions, we indicated to them that this is the kind of timeline that you will see in order to get a similar change of zoning. And if I may say, as a result of the efficiency that we've developed through this process, we'll probably shorten the timeline even more to get it in and out the door. Finally, as is respectfully requested of RMA staff, let your board take the following action: to allow the zone change initiation for PZ 13-001, Early Mart Regional Medical Center, to proceed as a change of zone PZ application on a 26,500 square-foot parcel, APN 318-084-001, within the community of Early Mart. The zoning designation, to be clear, would be changed from single-family residential R1 to professional office PO. That concludes my presentation.
Any questions from board members?
Just to commend the staff on their consistency and, and being able to move these projects forward quickly as they have.
Great. Anyone from the public like to comment on this? I know that we are, we have some Tulare Regional Medical Center officials. Any comments?
May I just say, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, before the gentleman comes to the podium, I would like to commend Mr. Chuck Prisbelski, project planner, who provided tremendous work in order to move this project along.
Great. You can go ahead and use the other microphone, too. Steve?
Steve Dubuski, Tulare Regional. First of all, I'd like to thank RMA, or the former RMA, for all the work they've done to get this done in a timely manner. To answer Mr. Worthley's question, the way I understand it, Steve, is that there's a onsite holding tank undergrounded with a pumping system that'll pump into the system, sewer system of the PUD approximately 2:00 in the morning. So, it doesn't overload the system.
Thanks, Steve. I appreciate that information, because I'm also thinking about other applications of this process elsewhere in the county, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dubuski. And just real quick, I'll make a couple of comments before we bring it back to the board for action. I think that this is a great application, and this is a great project for the community of Early Mart. They absolutely have a huge need. And, you know, as, as all of us know, that typically, schools tend to be the community centers in these unincorporated communities. And I'm really hopeful that as parents go to pick up their kids from school or go to drop their kids off, you know, the community tends to hover around the school area, so hopefully that will bring them access to preventative healthcare, and we'll see big changes in the overall health and well-being in the Early Mart population. So, real glad to see this moving forward, and glad we've been able to help make this process be smooth for Tulare Regional Medical Center. I'll bring it back to the board for action. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ennis. Second. We have a motion from Supervisor Ennis and a second by Supervisor Cox. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 31 is next on our agenda, and that has been pulled off of agenda to come back at a later date. Item number 32 is a request from Information and Communications Technology to approve the personnel resolution for changes to the following positions: delete one administrative aide, which is vacant, and add one secretary three. Peg?
Good morning. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Rousseau and counsel. The ICD Department is asking to add two positions and delete two positions. The added positions are secretary and staff service analyst, and the deleted positions would be an admin aide and a database administrator. Over the past five years, we have run pretty lean on our admin staff in order to try and up, keep our technical staff as well-staffed as possible. And as we approach 140 people, we're in need of more admin support within the department. We handle a great deal of confidential information through our department, and these positions will help in that process as well as helping in our payroll process and personnel issues process. We have done this in a way that saves the county $4,000, and the changes have been reviewed through the meet and confer process.
Great. Any questions from board members? Members of the public, any questions? Okay, seeing none.
Motion for approval.
We have a motion by Supervisor Worthley, a second by Supervisor Ashida. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Peg, before you leave, I want to acknowledge that we're gonna lose Ed, and we're sorry that Ed's moving on to Canada. So, thank you for all of your help over the years, Ed.
We, we will miss him. He's been a great asset, but I wish him well.
Best of luck, Ed. We do appreciate all that you've done for the board. But thanks for bringing in a good replacement. I think we'll do a fine job. Thank you. Thank you. And by the way, I need to speak with you on my email. It seems my phone isn't sending emails here lately, so just wanna check with you about that. All right.
Could be the operator.
That's neither here nor there. We're gonna move on now to the next item on our agenda, which is item number 33. We have a request from the Ag Commissioner Sealer to approve the personnel resolution to delete one vacant analyst, staff services three position, and add one accountant position allocation. Marilyn?
Morning supervisors. Marilyn Kenoshita, Ag Commissioner, Sealer of Weights and Measures. We recently had our analyst take a position closer to his Madera Ranchos home. So, we're requesting deletion of that position and adding the account position because the California Department of Food and Agriculture is asking us for an increased amount of programmatic accounting. And so, our department would really benefit from having somebody on staff that has a high, high level of accounting skills.
Great. Any questions from the board? Questions from members of the public?
One quiz. Is this gonna be an internal?
No, we had no one in, inside. It'll be a list that already exists through HR and D.
Thank you. All right. Bring it back to the board for action.
Sounds like a good move. Move for approval.
All right, we have a motion from Supervisor Ennis, and a second from Supervisor Cox. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Marilyn. Next, we're moving on to item number 34, which is a request from the Human Resources Development Department to establish a capital projects and facilities department. Jeff?
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. Jeff Cardell, Human Resources Director for the county. We're here this morning, as you recall, General Services was transferred from RMA to the county administrative office back in 2010. And since that time, there's, it's been determined that there's a significant volume of work specifically in capital's projects, and the nature of that being similar to facilities, that they should be combined to form a single department. With, with that, we are proposing the adoption of a department ed classification for that particular department and revision of the capital projects and facilities managers class to demonstrate that that individual will report to the director of that new department. So specifically, we're asking for the establishment of the capital projects and facilities department, adopting a personnel resolution to establish the director of capital projects and facilities position, and class designation and specification with a salary band of 99-735 to 149-604, band two, to appoint Kristen Bennett as the director of capital projects and facilities, and revise the capital projects and facilities manager class and designation and specification. Third, authorize the county administrative officer, auditor, controller, and human resources director to make minor adjustments as needed. One final note is that to support the functions of this new department, the administrative services section of General Services will need to be divided up, and that will be a, a subject of discussion later with the CAO and the department head for this new department. And a personnel resolution will be coming forward subsequently, right, relative to that. And I'll turn it over to the CAO.
Thank you, Jeff. You know, in, in thinking about this agenda item, I, I went through in my mind in the last couple of days, some of the organizational changes that have taken place, not all, but some of them, over the last few years, and the subsequent adjustments to those changes. You know, the county has four, over 4,800 allocated positions, spread over 42 budgetary units, and spread over geographically throughout the county. You know, the first one that comes to mind is a combination of the auditor, controller, and the treasurer tax collector. That was done some, some years ago. It's, it's worked out very well. And there've been some minor changes to that department, including the separation of the purchasing function into its own separate department in the last couple of years. Then I come to the, the creation of the new fire department, which was a, a difficult process, but we came out the other end. And there've been some, some recent organizational changes to that department relative to the division managers' pay, stipends, battalion chiefs, and what have you, which we, which we expected. We knew there were some issues early on, and we made those changes. And then, we came to the creation of the IT department. Once again, we, we canceled a contract. We created a department with the help of Peg Yates. And we're, they've recently gone through some reorganizations, including some minor changes that were on today's agenda. Also, unfortunately, we, we pulled solid waste management out of RMA recently, and we're going through that, that process of addressing the fiscal emergency that we, that we discovered and, and, and getting our operational act in order. There's been some other minor changes, minor organizational changes. And again, this isn't a complete list, but it's just something that, that came to mind. And we've used targeted increases to help recruit, hard to, hard to recruit classes such as animal control, elections, things of that nature. The Ag, the Ag Commissioner, since Marilyn has taken over, has implemented a lot of changes to her organization. She's reinvented the IT, IT portion of her department, provided iPads to her employees, new vehicles, flexibly allocated positions to help with recruitment and retention. And there were two items on today's agenda that continues that process, and there will probably be more to come as we go down the line. Then, then it brings us to the, to the action today. We pulled General Services out of RMA when good old Jake Raper took over. You know, we always felt, I felt personally and professionally, that the General Services didn't belong in RMA. RMA's functions are, aren't internal, but external for the most part. And we talked about internally, spinning it back out to the county land, as I, as I would, as I refer to it, or making other changes that made sense. That brings us to today's actions, the recommended actions. That is to create the new capital projects, facilities department, and appoint Kristen Bennett as department director. The amount of work associated with capital projects and facilities, as Jeff has indicated, has continued to grow and will grow further. There is potential of, of a new grant cycle for, for jails that we are, we are considering. And if we decide to go forward, we'll bring it back to this body for discussion. This year's, the CO's budget reflects a 75% reimbursement of her time due to an increase in workload and, and that huge $60 million South County jail project. The creation of the department will allow it to focus on its core mission of building and maintaining county facilities. And I always refer to, you know, one of the, it's not my favorite schedule, but it's a schedule that is very, reflects the, the condition of the facilities in the county. This is a schedule that was prepared about six years ago, when I first came back. And it reflects, it reflects the number of 121 facilities in the county inventory that was identified at the time. Again, this is six years ago. Forty-eight were unknown. They were so old, we didn't know how old they were. Fifty were over 30-plus years old. So 98 of 121 are at least 30 years plus. Another 13 were between the ages of 16 and 29. They probably exceeded the 30-year mark. And last but not least, we have 10 facilities that are relatively old. They're less than 15 years old. So to say that the county has a need to update its, its, its capital facilities would be an understatement. The, in a little over two years, in August of 2015, the county will make the last payment on, on its certificate of bonds, of participation, or otherwise referred as bonds. In the next two years, the county will develop a new capital projects plan, paid in part via issuance of new debt, or as a plan pay-as-you-go method. So, as we well know, we receive $2.5 million, sometimes three, sometimes three and a half in Millennium Fund dollars to address the county's capital needs. We, once we pay off the debt, we will receive anywhere from $3.5 to $4 million in monies that were originally. that were originally used to pay debt that we could potentially use on a pay-as-you-go basis, or to issue new debt. The new department will play a significant role in the development of the plan, while at the same time overseeing that large South County jail project. So in addition to this, there are a number of items that we will bring back to this board. Again, Jeff indicated the support staff. I've already met with Kristen Bennett and Ted Phipps to discuss the allocation or the splitting of support staff from facilities, capital projects, to what's left of the General Services. Part of this item also that we will bring back is the decentralization of Health and Human Service projects from Capital Projects to HHSA. This will include the transfer of a Capital Projects Coordinator from Capital Projects to HHSA. HHSA has two employees that work on Capital Projects internally. This individual will join them, and they will have their own team that will coordinate with the Facilities, Capital Projects Department going forward. We'll also, excuse me, we also will deal with workplace assignments, where these people are going to go, where they're going to sit, who they're going to report to, and what have you. We're going to need to develop protocols of communication between Health and Human Services Department and the Capital Projects slash Facilities Department, and any other department that might have capital projects going forward. And lastly, the remaining general service functions: custodial, fleet, parks and recreation, print and mail, property management, and utilities will stay under management of the CAO's office until we determine where it should be in the county land. With that, I'll turn it back to the board for any questions.
Any questions from the board? Supervisor Cox?
You know, I'm interested in seeing an organizational chart and the flow, workflow.
Okay.
And how long is it going to take before we can see that with actual, you know, positions and names plugged in?
Okay, we can bring that back. You know, we plan on bringing this, these remaining items back to the board in the next few, couple of weeks, and we'll have that org chart with that item.
Great, thanks. Supervisor Worthley?
Just want to say that I think this is a smart move for us to make. I remember when we created the Millennium Fund, and initially, we had problems because we didn't have the resources, human resources devoted to it, accumulation of monies without really being able to expend them. As you talk about our older facilities, we had a lot of needs, but we just really weren't being able to get them met because of the lack of oversight. And I think that, and then when I think also about bringing into your office, Gene, for a period of time, the operational side of the county government, it certainly was not a place for it to stay indefinitely. It should have, it was brought in for a specific purpose of trying to reorganize and make it more effective, more efficient. I think we've done a good job of that. So, and I think when I look at the project of the construction of the $60 million jail facility in the South County, which will take a number of years, I think all of this plays into a good move on the part of creating this particular department. One thing I just want to say is that as we look going forward, we have a need to continue to use Millennium Funds, I believe, to, on the maintenance side of our structures and facilities, parking lots and so forth. That doesn't really probably lend itself to other major capital projects as we think about going forward on the pay-as-you-go process, because I have a thing, we're going to need to use those funds for the foreseeable future on trying to keep our facilities up and running. And the last thing I want to say, as somebody is approaching his 60th birthday, that when you refer to these buildings as 30 years old as being beyond their life, it begins to get a little painful. I'm reminded that of my home, which I built 20 years ago, and I still think it was my new house, but when I look around closely, I can see that time is taking its toll. So, anyway, support what you're doing here today, I think it's a good move for the county.
That's an interesting statement, Supervisor Worthley, that means we've got four old buildings and one new one on the board here, so just thought I would point that out. Supervisor Ashida?
You're approaching 30, I would be.
Yeah, I've noticed the appreciation myself. I like to say that naming Kristen as the director, I couldn't think of anybody better to qualify to handle this major, major construction that we're doing in the South County jail facility. It's going to take a long time, and it's going to take a lot of minute reporting to the state and dealing with the state of California, and Kristen has done such an excellent job in all of her other assignments, that I would not trust this project to anybody other than Kristen. So, go get them.
Supervisor Statch, any comments?
I would just say kudos to what Supervisor Ashida said, I think that's great.
Okay, any comments from members of the public at this time? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board, and I will also say that I think that this is a smart move, and I do think that Kristen is the best possible individual that could have been selected to lead this department. There's going to be huge tasks on this department's shoulders going forward, and I don't think that the South County jail will be the last of them. So with that, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Motion approved, Chairman.
I'll second that. We have a motion from Supervisor Worthley, a second from Supervisor Cox, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. That concludes our regularly scheduled Board of Supervisors agenda for today's meeting. Council, do we have need for closed session?
Excuse me, you do, Mr. Chairman. You have items A through H on your board's closed session agenda. I do not anticipate any announcements.
All right. Thank you very much.